Commissioner Fish? Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome. This is the September 11th, 2018 work session. Welcome to the Joint Office on Homeless Services work session. Today, we're going to be discussing the Joint Office's outcomes, their report for the 2018 fiscal year. We have a shorter timeline than usual for that presentation, but I'm looking forward to hearing about the results of the investments that we've made over the past year. The focus, of course, for the rest of today's session is going to be on our progress towards 2,000 units of supportive housing, which is significant. Supportive housing is often the most effective way to serve a significant share of our neighbors experiencing homelessness. Supportive housing is humane and cost-effective compared to the expense of hospital and jail beds. It's also the most sustainable solution to address the livability challenges that come when people in crisis must live their private lives in public. We're also going to be making later on an exciting and, I think, a very important announcement regarding the housing bond. And before we jump into those things, I'm going to let the chair speak, but before we do that, why don't we also just quickly go around the table? I'm not sure everybody knows everybody, so if we could just go ahead and go around the table and do quick introductions.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
My name is Heather Wang. I'm in the Corporation of Homeless Services.
I'm Mark Jolyn with the Joint Office of Homeless Services.
Patricia Rojas, Deputy Director, Joint Office of Homeless Services.
Sharon Myron, Multnomah County Commissioner for District 1.
Nick Fish, Portland City Commissioner, and I have a question for Carla, our clerk, which is, do you want us to turn these off when we speak, after we speak?
I think you're okay leaving them on.
So that's new? Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Lori Stegman, Multnomah County Commissioner for District 4, representing East County.
Madam Fritz, for City Council.
Deborah Cifori, Multnomah County Chair.
Ted Wheeler, Mayor.
Chloe Daley, Portland City Commissioner.
Jessica Vega Peterson, Multnomah County Commissioner for District 3.
Dan Saltzman, Portland City Commissioner.
Michael Bonacore, Home Forward.
Shannon Callahan, the Portland Housing Bureau.
Very good. So before we jump in, I'd like to have Chair Cifori make some opening remarks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler and the Portland City Council for hosting today's joint city-county work session. It really fills me with pride to sit here, looking at my colleagues from both sides of our wonderful community. The housing crisis was our call to action, and our collective response was swift, culminating in the creation of the Joint Office of Homeless Services. It's been two years since we embarked on this journey together. We stepped into uncharted territory, and we bound ourselves together with one vision of ending homelessness. As you will see today, our coordinated and data-driven approach has made great strides, and we have momentum, and it is crucial that we keep it going. Because we can't forget that while it was the Great Recession that sparked this crisis, it is the economic recovery that has made it permanent. We hear that unemployment levels are going down, 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 but that isn't much to celebrate when you're working three jobs to keep the rent. And it's no surprise that the number of people experiencing homelessness on the West Coast is a result of skyrocketing rents and lower incomes. If you're poor, you are the first to be hit by an economic downturn, but even in the boom times, you're still hit hard. We live in an economy that is defined by income inequality. So for as long as income inequality defines our country's economic system, the Joint Office will remain a necessary local model for communities across the nation. Today's presentation will remind us of how far we've come in two short years, the homes we've saved, the homes we've created, and the next steps we will need to secure 2,000 units of supportive housing.
Very good. So with that, we'll turn it over to Mark Jolyn, who is the outstanding leader of the Joint Office of Homeless Services for Multnomah County in the city of Portland. He's going to update us on the progress, in many cases, record-setting progress over the last year. Good afternoon, Mark.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. As the chair said, we celebrated our second birthday on July 1st, and one of our commitments has been to come before you in this joint session once a year to update you on the progress that we've been making. As the mayor said, we have a shorter amount of time today than we have in past years to talk specifically about the work of the Joint Office, and so we'll have to do some follow-up afterwards because we really want to save time for the presentation of the supportive housing report and the progress update that the mayor was talking about. That said, we do want to give you an overview, both of some of the work that's been happening in the office and some of the outcomes. So the Joint Office was founded as part of the Home for Everyone Plan, which called for the creation of a new lead agency on homelessness in our community, and out of the urgent need to ensure that we are making the best possible investments of city and county resources in the face of the housing and homelessness crisis. Our work continues to be guided by the vision, core values, and strategies of this plan, the first being prioritizing the most vulnerable populations. This year, we advanced that value by fully implementing coordinated access to supportive housing in our community. We've assessed over 1,500 people and prioritized them for supportive housing based on their vulnerability. We prioritize racial and ethnic justice. That's been a particularly central focus of our work this year. We supported the members of the Home for Everyone in chartering an official equity committee. We joined seven other cities nationally as part of the Supporting Partnerships for Anti-Racist Communities, or SPARC initiative, which will have us looking deeply into the ways that institutional and structural racism cause homelessness and developing specific strategies to address that racism through our programming. We also just closed the recruitment for a new equity manager in our office that will be supporting the racial equity work within a Home for Everyone and among our nonprofit providers. We use data-driven assessment and accountability. This was an area that was called out in a report last year by the county auditor as really needing to be a focus for our office in order to ensure long-term success, and I couldn't agree more. In partnership with the Portland Housing Bureau and the Department of County Human Services, we've been working hard this year to improve data quality and our capacity to poll, analyze, and report data on a timely basis. You'll see just a glimpse of that today, but a lot more in the future. In addition to the strengthened coordination around data, we've added a data analyst to our team who has already significantly increased our ability to use data to monitor and evaluate our systems and programs. We engage and involve the community in all aspects of our strategies to address homelessness. It's one of the Joint Office's core functions to support the Home for Everyone governance structure, and that's significant: the executive committee, the coordinating board, multiple policy subcommittees, the equity committee, the data quality committees, and various population-specific oversight groups. These forums literally engage hundreds of people from a broad range of stakeholder communities and a significant number of people with lived experience of homelessness. And finally, we strengthen system capacity and increase leverage opportunities. This was another critical focus of our second year, and frankly, it's one of the promises of the Joint Office that is most important to us. We did increase our investments in the capacity of our nonprofits. We also initiated a number of really significant partners, partnerships, that align our efforts, the Joint Office's efforts with the County Health Department, with city and county emergency management, with the Office of Civic Life, with Home Forward, with the Portland Police Bureau, and OMF, with faith and business community leaders, and with the Portland Housing Bureau and a number of supportive housing projects that you're going to hear more about. Formation of the Joint Office of Homeless Services was intended to bring better coordination, integration, and consistency to the delivery of homeless services in our community. Our goal has been to integrate the best of the tremendous work that was happening at PHB and DCHS. As you can see on this slide, homeless services continue to be organized by population groups: adult-only households, youth under the age of 24, families with children, and domestic violence survivors. We also have a subsystem for homeless veterans. While serving different populations, all of these systems share common, certain common values and approaches. All include culturally-specific services and an expectation that every organization is delivering culturally-responsive services. All the systems use an assertive engagement service delivery model, a model that recognizes that people are the experts in their own lives, emphasizes the central role of authentic relationships and successful service delivery, and integrates best practices like trauma-informed care and motivational interviewing. All of our systems are continuously evaluating and improving. Each population system has an oversight body or leadership group that meets regularly to assess system design, evaluate outcomes, and pursue quality improvement. And each nonprofit provider that we fund is held accountable through their contracts for specific outcomes and provides quarterly reports to the Joint Office. Finally, every one of these systems is re-procured at least every five years. When we were initiated, initially formed, we participated in the re-procurement of the domestic violence system. This past year, we led the re-procurement of all family homeless services in our community, and right now, we have an RFPQ, a Request for Proposals or Qualifications, open for all of the services to homeless adults without children. These re-procurement, re-procurments are exciting opportunities to welcome new organizations who can contract with the Joint Office. Each of these systems also contains the same integrated core elements, and this is what you see in the circle here, in these circles, and I'm not going to go through all of them, but I do want to pull out a couple that relate to the outcome measures you're going to see in a moment. As you've often heard us say, the three core strategies to ending homelessness are prevention, placement back into permanent housing, and shelter that provides the basic safety and support services that make it a platform returning, for returning to permanent housing. All of our systems feature these three elements. Prevention for those who have not yet become homeless but without an intervention may become homeless. While the Joint Office does some of this work ourselves, a lot of it is done through Department of County Human Services family stabilization programs, and increasingly by the Portland Housing Bureau's tenant protection efforts. Housing placement and retention, this involves people moving out of shelter, off the streets, or out of dangerously doubled-up situations, back into permanent housing. It also involves the support services that they need to retain that housing. We have both short-term interventions that we call rapid rehousing, where we're providing limited rent assistance, limited housing case management, and also supportive housing programs, like the ones we'll talk about today, where there's long-term deeply affordable rent, long-term wraparound support services. And of course, in each of these systems, we have emergency shelter. We have our longstanding shelter and the many shelter beds that you know we've opened over the last several years. You also know that in this past year, we've transitioned from the rapid expansion of shelter beds to improving the quality of all of our shelter beds and better embedding services in those shelters so that we can maximize the number of people who are able to transition through them and back into housing. In each of these systems, we also have commitments to employment and benefit services, healthcare supports, and very importantly, information and access that is equitable into these services so people can get to them and get to them fairly. These are the key integrated elements that allow services in this community to be, to be provided in an equitable, effective, and efficient manner. Our budget, which many of you are familiar with, largely reflects this allocation of different types of work across our different systems. The chart also illustrates the balance that we, that we try to strike between investments in shelter operations and investments in helping people get back into housing and stay in housing. You'll also see here that about 4% of our budget goes to staff in the office to administer the systems of care and to support the Home for Everyone initiative. We're approaching 21 FTE this year. We've hired a new deputy director, as well as a data analyst. We are hiring an equity manager and a new emergency management specialist to help ensure that we can meet our commitments to the community and to our providers. So I'm going to pause here for a minute, and I want to thank very sincerely the amazing staff at the Joint Office. This is a group of people who have been tireless for the past two years. It takes a lot to change work groups or even employers to help build a new office and also be expanding the capacities of the systems dramatically and ensuring that that expansion is happening in an intentional and effective and accountable way. So if you're here with the Joint Office, can you just raise your hands for a minute and be acknowledged? I know many of you are here. And I also want to thank all of the staff of other city bureaus and county departments who have partnered with us to help build a solid foundation for the Joint Office. We could not have done it without them. I in particular want to acknowledge the Portland Housing Bureau's staff and the Department of County Human Services staff, who've been there with us every step of the way, are in, in our office every day making this work, and so thank you all very much for that. We are investing a significant sum of money, as you saw on our budget slide, in this work. This slide is intended to illustrate, however, that we are serving a lot of people with those investments, and when we break down the costs, it's actually not that significant on a per-person basis. What you see here is the total number of placements into emergency shelter, done last year, divided into the total amount of money spent on emergency shelter operations, it gets to a $2,197 per person cost. Similarly, when we divide the total number of people helped with housing placement and retention assistance last year into our budget, it's $2,423 per person that we're investing. When you consider what those investments mean to the people whose lives we're touching and what the alternative cost would be if we weren't making these investments, these are modest investments. The other thing that's important, I think, to call out here is we often talk about how much more effective it is to provide permanent housing than to provide shelter, and what you see here is a pretty modest difference in what it costs to provide shelter to someone as opposed to permanent housing. So if we can find permanent housing, we want to provide it to folks. And finally, before I turn it over to Patricia to talk about the actual outcome data, as much good as you're about to hear about, and there has been a lot to celebrate in the work this past year, the work of the Joint Office continues to happen in an incredibly challenging environment for our lowest-income and most vulnerable people. What you see here is an illustration of, for example, the 20,000 people in our community who have SSI as their income. They have less than $800 a month in their earnings. The yellow bar is the amount of money they should be contributing to their rent. The bars on the right are what the costs of an average studio apartment, one-bedroom apartment, and two-bedroom apartment actually are. Not only is it not affordable for someone in SSI, but it's impossible for someone in SSI to afford rents in those units. It's also true for people, elderly folks who are on social security benefits, who on average are bringing in about $1,300 a month, they also cannot find a unit they can afford or even pay for in our market. And even our full-time and minimum-wage workers are struggling. You can see that they may be able to pay the rent, but they are going to be severely rent burdened. And when we continue to have that situation, when there continues to be a growing and very large disparity between what our lowest-income households have available to them in income and what it costs to rent, this quote you have here is from McKinsey study that was done in Seattle recently, but it applies here just the same: People become homeless because every day, tens of thousands of households are on the verge, and it doesn't take very much for something to happen that will put folks onto the streets. There is no stronger correlation than the correlation between rise, the increase in rents and rates of homelessness. So with that, I will turn it over to our deputy director. Patricia, thank you.
Good afternoon. Well, I have the pleasure of sharing data with you that shows that your strong leadership and your commitment to collective effort is paying off. It is leading to big strides in ending homelessness in our community, and we also have a lot of work to do. We, in the Joint Office, have made significance, significant improvements over the last couple of years in how we talk about data, how we gather data, how we analyze data, and that being said, there is also a lot of work to do there. With every question that is answered by data, there is another that emerges, and the Joint Office is committed to constantly improving our process of data analysis. And then one last thing before I jump into the first slide is that data conversation is very important to keeping ourselves accountable, and today, for the sake of the vast amount of information that we're going to provide, I will not have a ton of time to cover data, but I will welcome one-on-ones and will provide a significant report that provides a lot of detail to answer more questions. All right, so we'll jump right in to placements into permanent housing. Oh, sorry, before we jump into that, sorry, I forgot about this slide. So a big number here. We have served 35,000 people in FY '18, and that is a significant number of folks across the various systems that are part of our efforts. And just for context, the city of Forest Grove, I think, is at 24,000, and Fairview is around 7,000. So there's a lot of folks that are benefiting from the collective effort that we have here. So now we're looking at folks served into, placed into permanent housing. Notably, we've had an increase over the last several years in folks being placed into permanent housing, and if we really look back into before, for everyone, that number is nearly double. And this year, or FY '18, we reached 5,924 new placements, and because of our improved data capacity, we're also able to reflect folks that we're still serving from the previous year, and that number has also increased significantly to 11,990 individuals. As Mark mentioned earlier, we have a commitment to racial equity, and we can't address equity if we don't know the extent of the inequities that exist in our communities. And so one of the things that we have taken a stride towards is the disaggregation of data and how data is, or the definitions of race. So you'll see a much broader range of definitions or categories for race, and, for example, this is very important because in certain categories, that as defined by HUD, which is the previous way that we defined race, for example, in the Latinx community, you don't really get to see race in its true form. Some people have to mark white or other, and so it doesn't give us a clear picture of what the disparities are in communities of color. And so a big shout-out to Steve for doing this because it's great. So that being said, we have the point in time outlined at the bottom, and this is important because the way we address racial inequities is by making advancement and increasing levels of services in the communities of color that are facing disparities. So we're addressing racial inequities, and you can see that by the level of the percentages of, that are associated with communities of color in the point in time count are lower than the percentage of service delivery. So hopefully that makes sense. The point in time, as you may know, is our mechanism to count and, and talk about homelessness in our community, and it is imperfect. It has flaws both in its methodology and in its capacity to reach. One of those areas that is very difficult is that it's not an inclusive, it doesn't have inclusive definitions of homelessness, and we know that in our community, homelessness does not just express as street homelessness or shelter. In immigrant communities and Latinx community, as an example, we see folks doubled up, tripled up in unsafe situations, and that is something the point in time does not capture. So again, we have some work to do in how we are reflecting homelessness in our community. So we're also have, have a slide here on the retention work. So we're not only placing folks, but we're also supporting folks to, once they are placed, to retain their housing. It appears from the data that we're seeing a decline in retention, and we have found a strong correlation between the rate of decline and the rate of an organization's ability to contact the individual. Part of our system is that if we are not able to contact the individual a year after exiting the program, then if we're not able to contact them, we assume that they are no longer housed. That is what the data reflects, or is how it being, how it is being reflected in the data, but we don't know. And so this is an area that we need to dig a little deeper to find out what is, what are the barriers that agencies are facing in contacting folks a year post-exit. One of the most notable things, however, is that something we're doing is working because of the people that we were able to contact, 89% of those individuals reported being safely housed. So that's something to celebrate. So the Joint Office of Homeless Services does not procure or run the prevention part of our system, and again, it is a very important part of the strategy in, in ending homelessness is to stop it from happening to begin with. And this slide shows that we have placed 6,300, I'm sorry, we've assisted 6,320 individuals in new, I'm sorry, new prevention support for a total of 8,048 when we look at the total number of people that we've served, so those from the previous year that are still engaged in services. When we disaggregate by race, something that's notable in the data is, in the Latinx community in particular, you see a significantly higher rate of folks receiving prevention services, and as, again, to my earlier comment, we know that the Latinx community and many immigrant communities do not present through the adult-coordinated systems or homelessness end of the spectrum. They will present in the prevention end of the spectrum because of definition limitations. And so I think this slide points to something going on there that we need to explore further.
Madam Chair, I have a quick question on the retention. Those numbers look great, but as you said, the Latinx numbers go down by 101, and how do you propose, from '17 to '18, we lost 101 folks with that, if you look at the numbers, Hispanic or Latinx. In fiscal year '17, there were 955 folks helped, but the number went down to 854, which is 101. How do we propose to make that, that difference up?
I think we're, I don't know why we lost the image up there, but folks are, you have it in front of you, so hopefully you're looking at the, at the front of the slide. So Commissioner, are you, you're referring to the
The permanent placement?
New homeless, permanent placement or the preventions?
People served in permanent housing.
Oh, let's go back to that.
Previous slide. Every demographic has, has increased from fiscal year '17 to fiscal year '18, but the Latinx numbers went down by 101. Are we trying to identify how that happened?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, again, as I mentioned in the beginning, there's going to be a lot of questions that will emerge from the data and will emerge from the data, and we've made a commitment to continue to explore those answers. That being said, there are, what the data doesn't tell you is what's happening in the environment. And one of the things, honestly, as a person that lives in the community, in the Latinx community, and that worked in this service area, one of the things that we've seen is that folks don't want to engage right now with government institutions. And so that's just of reality, is that there are factors in the landscape that people don't want to be seen. And that plays in. And so again, we want to be, we want to consider that there's a lot that we don't know about the reasons why we're seeing what we're doing, why we're seeing some of these rates be what they are. And we have a lot of digging to do with our communities to figure out in more detail what's leading to that.
So are you saying these folks are service resistors?
No, not necessarily. I'm just saying as an example, there are factors in the environment that may lead to a person's, you know, a person's situation, or the rate being what it is. Does that make sense?
Or they may have lost their housing for whatever reason.
There's, exactly, there's a big question mark. We don't know. And so it could be that, you know, in terms of retention, somebody may be working three jobs and not able to pick up a call, you know, as far as our ability to reach people, you know, as an example. So there are lots of areas that we have to research to figure out more specifically what is happening there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, we'll continue.
Okay, I think we were in the next slide.
This is the retention for the prevention.
Perfect. So, thank you. So similarly, a similar factor here, if an agency isn't able to make contact with a household, then we can't verify what is happening, and we are having challenges contacting folks. The other piece that I think is in line with what I was mentioning earlier is, you know, the political environment does pose a significant challenge to communities of color. And there are situations where organizations are having to mitigate a significant level of trauma in delivering the services that are being delivered, and that impacts an organization's ability to deliver the service. And so we have to balance making sure that we're supporting organizations to do trauma-informed work and use culturally-specific and responsive approaches in a meaningful way. And so some of those numbers have been reduced because of that. And so to recognize the level of trauma, and also as systems expand and scale, there will also be a lull in time as the system is building. And so again, there are lots of questions that have emerged from the numbers that we're seeing, but we are going to continue to dig in deeper into what's going on there. But those are some examples of factors that come into play.
Have the methods of trying to contact people changed since, over the course of time? So it seems like that would be a stable factor, so that wouldn't necessarily account for the decreases?
So, and feel free to jump in, Mark. Each organization uses mechanisms, so calling is one mechanism, but I will also say that organizations use whatever mechanism best works in their communities. And so they know their communities best in their engagement practices, and so they're each, I would say that there is a variation of techniques to try and contact individuals. So there is some digging to do around what retention or what those efforts look like.
I think it's important, and Patricia mentioned this, that this is trying to contact folks who are no longer enrolled in services, so they've been out of services for a year. We, of course, are in close touch, the providers are close in touch with folks when they're enrolled, but we measure retention to see where the interventions, the services provided, effective in generating longer-term stability. So it's contacting somebody who we may not have been in contact with for six months or 12 months, and that presents part of the challenge. But I don't think the methods have changed much. We have a lot more people trying to be contacted now than we used to, and providers are having to scale up. So we are, as Patricia said, looking into understanding better what's going on there. Okay, emergency shelter?
Yep. Right. Another component of our strategy is emergency shelter. And we have served over 8,000 folks in shelter, which is a lower number than the year before. And I think what's a very important factor in that statistic is the fact that shelter stays are longer. They're basically doubled than they were, double the rate they were last year. And so what's really an important message is that if people don't have a place to move to from shelter, then the shelter, we can't serve as many people. So even though we've added capacity to shelter, it's still an issue because of the housing crisis. And so, all that being said, there is still a significant need. We're doing a lot of great work. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, and we know that there is a significant need out there, and we need to expand all parts of our system. We need to continue to build what we've started to build. This slide is an example of, just one snapshot, it is not, this is by no means a comprehensive reflection of what the need is in our community. These are the two entry, two entry points to our system. So the top number is the list of folks waiting on our adult-coordinated access, and the bottom number is for the family system, folks waiting in the queue. And so, again, without supportive housing, we're not going to be able to address the issues, and we're not going to be able to be as effective or optimal in each of the service areas that we provide. So I'm going to pass it on to Mark now to talk a little bit further about that piece of this structure.
And I'm actually going to hand it on to Commissioner Fish, but I do want to set the context for us. I mean, we've, as you heard, there's been a lot of activity inside of the Joint Office, but one of the most important things we've been involved with was initially the framing of a, of a plan around chronic homelessness, and the center point of that was supportive housing. And for the last nine months, at your direction, we've had the opportunity to work on this supportive housing plan. And with that, I'll give it to Commissioner Fish, who can introduce our next presenter.
Thank you very much, and let me join with the mayor in welcoming our colleagues from the other side of the river. I think I speak for all my colleagues, and I wish we had more opportunities like this to visit and to have these conversations, because there's a lot of learning going on. So thank you, Mark. And colleagues, let me begin by saying I've been Commissioner long enough to remember when we didn't have a Portland Housing Bureau or a Joint Office of Homeless Services. Instead, affordable housing was divided between the Portland Development Commission and the former Bureau of Housing and Community Development, and we had a disparate system of services and facilities spanning two governments with many disconnected pieces of the puzzle. At a certain point, we realized that structural problems were getting in the way of doing this work as efficiently and as effectively as we could, and that vulnerable people in our community deserve better. So in 2009, we created the Portland Housing Bureau to focus on the needs of our communities most vulnerable. That left the then Portland Development Commission to focus on economic development and PHB to focus on homelessness and affordable housing. Next, under the leadership of Chair Kofori and Commissioner Saltzman, we undertook a major review of our homeless service system and determined that collapsing the work of the county and the city into one office governed by both jurisdictions was the best solution. Now, it didn't happen overnight, and a lot of us had heartburn about pieces of this transition, but we shared the ultimate vision of a joint office, and we worked together to implement the vision. Today, I'm proud to report we have a more streamlined and effective structure that allows us to do the most good for the most people with our limited resources. And our commitment to this work isn't dependent on the commitment of any single elected official at the city or the county. The Joint Office ensures that each and every one of us prioritizes this work. So why am I telling you this? I love these rhetorical questions. At least, when you put that in. So why am I telling you this? Because I believe we're at a similar juncture with our work on supportive housing. We've all been at this long enough to understand that supportive housing is the solution to reducing chronic homelessness. The most recent point-in-time counts show that nearly three-quarters of people living outside are chronically homeless. That means they're dealing with things like chronic illness, drug and alcohol addiction, and/or mental health challenges, or all three. In short, they're the people most at risk of dying on our streets. They need the most help, and they require the most public investment to achieve safe and stable housing. That's why in 2017, the city and the county made a big commitment to add 2,000 new units of supportive housing over the next 10 years. And while I'm pleased that we're making good progress to add the new housing to our system, we also know that we don't have a structure in place that will allow us to create supportive housing at scale as efficiently and as effectively as we would like. So last year, we asked the Joint Office to lead the work of building a plan, to scale up these investments, to get many more units online, and to establish a system that we can, that can continue to produce supportive housing until we're meeting our community's need. Today, our partners at the Corporation for Supportive Housing and the Joint Office will give us a roadmap, and they will share with us what they believe it will take to get to our shared goal. I'm really proud of this work, and I'm looking forward to hearing from them, but I want to close with a cautionary note. Supportive housing is a significant investment in our future. Failure to invest in solutions to ending chronic homeless will cost us even more. So I'm pleased to hand it off to interim Director of the Portland Housing Bureau, Shannon Callahan. Shannon?
Good afternoon, Commissioner Fish and members of the County Commission. I am actually, believe I'm turning it over to Heather Lyons this morning to kick us off. Heather, would you like to?
Go ahead, Bill.
Heather has been working with us since the advent of the county and city resolution with the, and presents to us the plan that has been developed in coordination with the city and the county, Joint Office, Portland Housing Bureau, and a numerous list of partners in the nonprofit and affordable housing development community. So with that, thank you very much, Heather.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. Good afternoon, Mayor, Chair, and Commissioners. My name is Heather Lyons, and I'm the Director of the Pacific Northwest, Hawaii, Alaska, and Northern California for CSH. I'm here to highlight the report regarding the recommendations for the 2,000 new units of supportive housing. And while my work covers a large geographic area, I've been spending most of my time doing work in Portland and Multnomah County, and I live here, so I'm really thrilled to be doing work in my backyard. CSH, or the, I'm not sure if the slides are, oh, well, there they go. Thank you. CSH, or the Corporation for Supportive Housing, is a national organization represented in all regions across the United States. We've been around for more than 25 years. We started our work in New York, and that's where our headquarters are now. Our primary focus is to create supportive housing through systems and policy change and, of course, increased resources. The presentation you're going to see is following, follows the outline of the report that you've received. So I'm going to start with a background, and it's going to be pretty brief because I think both Commissioner Fish and Mark and Patricia have talked a little bit about the population we're going to be talking about today. So first, what is supportive housing? We, at CSH, we believe that deeply affordable housing is the solution to ending all homelessness, and that supportive housing is the solution for a subset of people who need both affordable housing and coordinated services to succeed in that housing. And not everybody, I'm sorry that the font is so small, but hopefully you can read it on your handout a little bit, not everyone experiencing homelessness needs supportive housing. Here are some characteristics of those who do. They have very, very low incomes, they have complex needs, they are chronically homeless and/or cycle through institutions. Perspective tenants of supportive housing are also often those individuals, and sadly, some families that we see on sidewalks, parks, and other public areas of our community. It works. We have a huge evidence base that shows that it works, and there's just a few examples on this slide, including a study of Bud Clark Commons here in Portland, Oregon. It works not only for improving health outcomes and housing outcomes for people, but it also decreased costs in the community, which Mayor Wheeler alluded to, excuse me. More detail about these and others are in the report, including a link to CSH's extensive, it's really extensive bibliography outlining research across many communities, projects, and systems. During this whole process, we applied a Home for Everyone's racial equity statement and related work with Spark to all aspects of this planning effort. These will be especially important, and frankly, could be updated through the implementation effort in order to be explicit about the needs for people of color who need supportive housing. Additionally, a Home for Everyone has used a racial equity lens for the definition of chronic homelessness, and I'm so glad, because the definition of chronic homelessness does not serve communities of color very well. So, Home for Everyone, it changed that definition to better meet the needs of color, meet the needs of people of color, and we applied this in our work through this process as So now I'm going to talk a little bit about our analysis of the unit projections and the financial modeling. There are essentially four models of supportive housing. These are explained in detail in the report. Single site means all units are supportive housing in a single building. Integrated means that some units of an affordable property may be set aside for supportive housing. Scattered-site units are leased units in the community. Some may be clustered, which is a fourth type in a rental development, meaning you could have 12 or 13 or 14 units in a larger unit, which actually helps save resources in terms of serving populations and also could help build community. Excuse me. So while these are very simple diagrams of two types of financing that we modeled, the approach for both, as most people who are sitting in this room, is quite complicated. Thankfully, the city, county, home forward, and very excellent providers in the community have the brains and experience to make that happen. There are pros and cons to both approaches. For leasing units, some of these pros and cons may be relatively obvious. Two very important pros are that it's much more expedient and increases tenant choice to do leasing in the community. However, as most people know, and as Mark described in his presentation, the market is tightening, and Multnomah County has consistently been losing units at 30% and below of median family income, thereby increasing the amount of rent assistance that is needed. Also, when we double what's called double subsidizing through rent assistance, particularly in some affordable housing, we increase the risk to reduce the total availability of affordable housing, which can disproportionately affect people of color, and this really needs to be paid attention to. So therefore, what's critically important is that the overall policy is to create a net gain of affordable and supportive housing units. For building new units, the pros and cons may also be a little bit obvious. Building creates new stock that is more secure than leasing in the community, and it creates jobs, and the configuration can build a sense of community among tenants. All of that is wonderful, however, it takes a very long time to develop units in the community. The cost is also greater in the beginning, but as you'll see in the next slide, the annual cost actually goes down. We offer two models for consideration. One is a 50/50 build-to-lease model, 50 units built in the community or developed in the community, that also includes rehab, and 50 units leased in the community. The other model is a 70/30 model, build-to-lease. The 70/30 model is more expensive in the beginning, as it makes sense, because you're developing 70% of the units in the community. It ends up being more cost-effective in the long run when it comes to ongoing costs. As you'll see in the last columns, the annual costs are $43 million a year versus $47 million a year. Also, over time, savings in operations of developed units versus leasing in the community actually makes up for capital expenses, and more information about how all of this works is detailed out in the report. These costs are based out, are based on the 2,000-unit goal. In the report, you'll see we actually estimate the need over 10 years to be 2,455. We use point-in-time data that we annualized along with some formulas that CSH has developed over time to get to a number that not only includes chronically homeless people, but includes other people who may not meet the definition of chronic homelessness for whatever reason, and often are folks who are cycling through our emergency service centers and our institutions. Particularly, more detail on population characteristics are in your report, and especially in Appendix E. So there is a cost of not doing it, as Mayor Wheeler mentioned. These are local costs, and the sources of these costs are in the report. As I mentioned in the last slide, many potential tenants of supportive housing cycle through emergency and institutional settings. And if any of you have been through an emergency department waiting room, you can witness the extent of this use for yourself. As you can see, supportive housing is significantly less expensive. And additionally, research documents that it improves health outcomes, and it reduces criminality of people who, of people who are cycling through these institutions once they are placed in supportive housing. So now, how do we get all of this funded? It will clearly take more than the city and county resources to get to 2,000 units, and Home Forward as well. These notable examples on the slide include health systems, who engaged a team of us to create a strategic plan to help them determine how to explore investments in supportive housing, which is exciting. These include mechanisms to pool resources regionally. Also, private insurance has been involved heavily in funding supportive housing in other states, and we've been doing a lot of work with them in communities across the country. That hasn't happened yet here in Oregon, and there may be an opportunity there. Finally, you may have seen the governor released her housing agenda, and increasing permanent supportive housing for those experiencing chronic homelessness is in one of her top four categories, so the state is definitely paying attention to this. And I should also know that many of these sources, including philanthropy, have been at the table for some time, and ensure there's a lot of interest in supportive housing, just a lot of interest, as a solution to systems problems, which provides great opportunities for engagement. This is one model that I'd like to share that we have been involved in at CSH. The Flexible Housing Subsidy Pool, or FHSP, is a model that's currently being employed at a very large scale in Los Angeles. It was first developed in San Francisco, and a new effort is underway in Chicago. This is a method for pooling resources administered usually by one entity, but it doesn't necessarily have to be. While the title includes housing subsidy, it can also fund services and has the potential to include capital resources as well. It also gives opportunities for new funding entities to more easily invest in supportive housing as a solution to people experiencing long-term homelessness with complex health needs. There's also some, oh, excuse me, there, I want to go through, there's a lot going on around supportive housing in the community, and I want to go through a couple of the related efforts. There is a tri-county plan that's currently happening that's funded by Metro. We're currently working on a ground-up process in Washington and Clackamas Counties to encourage leadership to identify supportive housing as a key solution to their issues around homelessness, and the Multnomah County report will be included in this. The mental health analysis, spearheaded by Commissioner Mirren, was released in June, and the report outlines funding and services that can help guide opportunities to integrate community services for people living in supportive housing. The Regional Supportive Housing Impact Fund, or RSHF Collaborative, is the offshoot of the Health Systems and Foundations investment of $22.6 million for central city-concerned buildings, and, as I mentioned before, they are interested in future investments, and they're funding a few of us to help come up with a strategic plan to help them figure out how best to do that. The last thing I'll mention is the Frequent User Systems Engagement Effort, FUSE. The purpose of it is to identify frequent users across systems, and these are highly vulnerable people who are cycling through these systems. Multnomah County FUSE includes criminal justice, health systems, and the homeless sector, and it also includes Unity. In addition to identifying this issue, these individuals, the process promotes systems collaboration as well as works to get these identified study, in the study, into supportive housing. So it's more than just a research piece, it's actually about ending homelessness for these folks who are cycling through the institutions. So on to implementation. As with any new governance model, there are new acronyms. So allow me to introduce the SHFC and the SHIC. The Supportive Housing Funders Collaborative will work on obtaining new or expanded revenue to fund supportive housing. The Implementation Committee will refine recommendations in the plan as needed, track projects against the progress metrics, and provide regular reports to a Home for Everyone and other community-facing bodies. These groups will work with the Home for Everyone subcommittees and will also fall under the Executive Committee. Having this structure is critical to sustain implementation to create 2,000 units and more. What we've seen in many communities is that there may be great political will, there may be great community advocacy, but if you don't have the support within the bureaucracy and within the community to have the infrastructure, it doesn't, it just doesn't happen. So this is really important to have in place. There's more detailed descriptions of these bodies and the potential membership in your report, but they are intended to be designed with cross-systems membership and also using a well-thought-out equity lens for supportive housing. The plan also suggests a regional model that's similar in scope to the local model. It's a really great suggestion and something we plan to offer to the Steering Committee of the tri-county planning effort that I mentioned earlier. Additionally, the Regional Supportive Housing Impact Fund Collaborative Strategic Plan is also region-wide, so it's really important to focus on our region when it comes to efforts of supportive housing. Here are some recommended outcomes to be tracked. In addition to these, other funders who come to the table may want to see improved health outcomes for tenants in addition to housing retention. While it's in a smaller font, it is really, really important to state that the data sharing is critical for measuring this effort as well as related ones, including FUSE and the Regional Supportive Housing Impact Fund. It's a very difficult process, but it's absolutely necessary to better understand the needs of the population, and it helps systems figure out how to work better together. The final component of implementation is to ensure that a communication plan is completed in order to make sure the public understands the importance of the investment as well as the outcomes in people's lives. An example would be Speak Up, which is a program in Los Angeles that CSH supports and in Chicago as well. It helps supportive housing tenants find their voice, tell their story, and learn how to be strong advocates in the community. And while it's very easy to get caught up in these numbers, and we should certainly talk about them, we all recognize that the point of doing this work is for the people. Supportive housing has worked for so many and can work for so many more. There's a saying in mindfulness practice that says, "May all beings find relief, relief, may all beings find peace, and may all beings be at ease," and supportive housing offers that venue for people in need. First, thank you all for your leadership, for even sitting around the table together and listening to us talk with you around these issues around homelessness and supportive housing. In addition to everyone that's listed in Appendix A when you get to that part of the report, thanks to your staff, thanks to the conveners, the Provider Advisory Group, and others who've been absolutely critical in the process. I also want to call out the support and expertise from staff in the Joint Office, Mark for sure, but especially Ryan Dybert. He was absolutely essential in helping to pull this report together. I also want to recognize this group of folks called the PSH Group, who is a subcommittee of the Home for Everyone's Health and Housing Committee. And this small group of people that you probably have never heard of helped spark this first level of work that got us to this point. And while the whole group contributed to jump-starting the effort, I just want to call out, those of you may know or may not know, you should know, Amande Saul, really, she staffed that, she kept us together, and she kept it organized, and she really made a lot of this happen. And now that we're at this point, it's worth highlighting nationally how this community is exploring how to bring various resources to the table in creating systems change. This can't be done without the infrastructure and the work that has already gone into creating a Home for Everyone, and this shows that the community can come together to accomplish these goals. And finally, one thing that's really exciting about this, that is, it's always exciting to see this, that implementation starts before the planning is done. Units are actually going on the ground, which you'll hear about in a minute. It is trend-setting work to have this level of momentum, and as I stated, CSH does this kind of work all over the country, and Portland and Multnomah County are considered a leader among others in this movement. And fair warning, we should expect a lot of visitors from a lot of other communities to learn how we do it. So now I'll turn it back to Mark and Shannon, as well as to Michael Bonacardi. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So although 2,000 units of supportive housing is really an ambitious goal, one of the reasons we're really confident that we can reach that goal is because of the progress that we've already been able to achieve working together. Since the adoption of the resolution that you passed in October of last year, we have added or planned in our pipeline 517 units of new supportive housing. The latest of those projects you will learn about at the end of this presentation from Chair Kefory and Mayor Wheeler. 162 of the units are already online through a combination of acquisition and long-term leasing. I have details on where all those projects are located, and they will be in our State of Housing report later this year. Commissioner Fish, I wanted to make sure you were aware of that, that we'll make sure to have it in State of Housing very shortly. Another 355 units are already planned in our pipeline and will be online by 2021. 280 of those are new construction acquisition. Primarily, those are some of the units we already had in our pipeline and then new housing bond units that we're planning for, which include the project you'll hear about this afternoon, as well as our 30th and Powell project and our project that we're beginning construction on in the Cully neighborhood. 75 of those units are, will be leased in existing units with the support of VASH vouchers. Home Forward really plays a central role in both of these strategies, both the leasing and the building and acquisition of new units. So this is our way of making sure that there's a very clear and transparent way of communicating our progress to the public. So this you'll see, which we will be constantly updating, is just one of the simplest forms of updates that you'll see from us. There's other tracking methods that Heather indicated earlier in her proposal, but this is something that we think will resonate and be easily able to explain to the public as to where we are in terms of our progress. And one of the more exciting pipeline projects that we've been able to coordinate on is actually in the Summer Notice of Funds Availability, or NOFA. It's a way that Portland Housing Bureau puts out funds in a competitive process. We are presently soliciting proposals for that to create the first new supportive housing single-room occupancy model in Portland that we've seen in quite some time. This is actually a conglomeration of funds, both from the city of Portland, the first time that we have also been able to pair, partner with the Oregon Housing and Community Services. They've also contributed capital funds. And then notably, the Joint Office is committing to ongoing funding services for the supportive housing once those units are built. So it's really a truly exciting project that we will make, pick proposals and make announcements of before the end of the year. And with that, I would like to turn it over back to Mark.
Mark, before you close up, can I just make a comment?
Yeah.
Because I know we're going to then come back to an announcement. And can we, can we turn back to page 27 for a second in our, in our PowerPoint handout? Because that has the how much and the two models. And I just wanted to make three comments, and Mark, I wanted you to fact-check me. So if I, if I stray. I think all of us understand the perils of laying out a 10-year budget. Hell, I used to run the Water Bureau. I had a problem with, you know, quarterly bills. People would get their quarterly bill and say, "This is much more expensive than my, you know, Comcast bill." Yep, yeah, but it's a quarterly bill. And so we've now got 20,000 people getting monthly bills, and interestingly, they don't look at the bill the same way as they did when they got a bill and it was three times bigger. So recognizing this is a 10-year budget, I just wanted to acknowledge that when you break the numbers out in the second and third column, I think we can all be very heartened. So for example, the capital cost side, which is, if you, if you go with the blended 70-30, is about $400 million. Well, you know, that's $40 million a year. Now, when we think about all of our resources, tax increment financing dollars, CDBG, we think about general fund, we think about just, you know, every conceivable tool that we have, $40 million is not an insurmountable wall. Now, the question is, how much of this comes at the expense of other kinds of housing we want to do? So that's a question of prioritization. But, you know, when you look at the Portland Housing Bureau budget and you look at the annual, what, $40 million a year, you know, is, is, I mean, you have spent in some years $100 million on the capital side. So let's put it in context. So again, the 10-year number is sort of scary. The annual number is manageable. The number, though, that I think is the most heartening is the ongoing annual cost. And I think we almost do a disservice to the discussion to have as the cost of not doing it, the daily cost or the, rather than the annual cost, because we're not comparing apples to apples. So I just, I'm innumerate, but I took a couple of these numbers and did the math. So for example, on the jail bed, which is the ultimate default bed for someone who is failing through our system, it's $76,650 a year. So $20,000 a year for the annual cost of doing a subsidy and services to have a successful outcome, that seems like a relative bargain. Well, you do, you do the math, this emergency room number is way low. There was a story in the paper the other day, healthcare providers are, they're using a number of close to $17,000 a year of emergency room services for people who are coming chronically homeless, who are coming a lot. And since I'm spending way too much time in emergency rooms this day, these days, the emergency rooms in the city look like shelters. They're not healthy places for anybody. And so you do the math on that. So unless, and please correct me, Mark, but, but if, again, if you break down the capital cost per year, manageable. We have lots of tools, and we have tools that we can add. When you look at the ongoing annual costs, and this is the piece that really ensures success, I'm extremely heartened by that number and confident that if we look at various pots and we're really creative, and we make the case to some of our partners that we're saving you a fortune by getting people out of the emergency rooms, keeping them out of jails and other things, really take that dividend and reinvest it in permanent supportive housing, we can get there. So, so again, the headline will always be the 10-year number, because we put it up there as, you know, what's the stretch goal over 10 years? But that's not how we budget. We set the stretch goal, but then we budget annually. And I have to say, I am pretty confident that with us working together, we can fund this plan. So just wanted to make that comment, and Mark has not raised the red flag, saying that.
And I would.
Not off the rails too much.
Shannon, do you have your red flag?
Not off the rails too much.
So I think we have a couple just slides to finish this up. Shannon mentioned that in the, in the SRO, NOFA, it was the first time we actually have braided funding. And when we talked to our community partners and stakeholders about how to make supportive housing work at scale, there's a lot of conversation about looking to government, in particular, to align funding ahead of time and make it possible for people to come forward with projects that have the funding identified for the development and the operations and the support services. And so that is where that NOFA is kind of illustrative of the kind of braiding, and it came up in Heather's presentation as well. This slide captures that, but also some of the other ways that we're already aligning, aligning our county resources, Joint Office resources, with the housing development work that's going on at PHB around supportive housing. So we've had our family system of care, our homeless family system of care, identifying families to go into some of the new bond-funded, family-sized units. So there's already a nice kind of partnership in place between those specific buildings and our homeless family system of care to make sure that families that need supportive housing are getting in. Last year, we launched a mobile supportive housing team. It's a multi-agency, multidisciplinary team that is able to provide services in multiple different buildings that are in the, inside of PHB's portfolio, where there are smaller numbers of units of supportive housing. So through that team, we've been able to create supportive housing in current inventory. So those are just a couple of examples. We also are just about to submit our 2018 Continuum of Care application. That's our application to HUD. And this year, the winning proposal for a potential new bonus project was from, I believe, NARA and NEA, if I'm not mistaken, our two Native American culturally-specific service providers. And if we get that funding, it will add 60 units of supportive housing to our community as well. So there is, as Shannon said, a lot already underway that is pushing us towards this 2,000-unit goal, and I'll turn it over to Michael.
I wanted to let folks know that we recently applied for 50 VASH vouchers, which serve homeless veterans, and we heard back from HUD, who said to us, "Perhaps you would like to ask us for 159." So we did. So we're waiting to hear that, but that's a very specific suggestion from HUD. So we feel good that that will be the number that we receive. And we also have a new resource that we have not yet had in this community. It's called mainstream vouchers. So we recently applied for those and were awarded 99 from HUD, which is the maximum amount a community can receive, and very few communities receive the maximum amount. And we know additional allocations will be made in the future for which we will compete. Mainstream vouchers, the mainstream in Mainstream vouchers, the mainstream in the title essentially means helping people access sort of mainstream housing, if you will. They're designed to help people who are either leaving institutionalization or who are at risk of institutionalization. So, that's new for us, and we're really excited about it. And, clearly, both of those resources are designed for a population who have many of the needs that we're trying to get at in our goal.
Michael, do you want to say for folks who may not know what, what VASH is, what it's serving, how it functions?
Sure. So, VASH vouchers are special designated vouchers specifically for veterans. They've been a big part of our community's ability to functionally end veteran homelessness in the community. We currently have over 600, and the new 159 will take us over 800 in the community.
That's great.
All right. Are we ready to? Shannon, I think this is you.
Okay.
No, I'll testify.
Terrific. So, there is one more really exciting supportive housing project we do want to talk about today. And, thanks to the support of everyone here at this table, we will be able to combine Portland housing resources with county capital resources to acquire and replace the Westwind Apartments, which is one of the last remaining single-room occupancy hotels in private hands, providing low-barrier, unregulated, but essentially affordable housing to some very vulnerable clients who are, seek services from all of our different agencies. So, with that, I would like to actually turn it over to the mayor and the chair for some comments.
Well, thank you, Shannon. And, yes, this is very exciting, and I think this is a very appropriate announcement to make today, since we have the City Council and the County Commission here together, because we are collectively making a joint announcement about the Westwind. So, this is, of course, the latest housing bond project, and it will be dedicated to providing supportive housing for homeless individuals predominantly in downtown Portland. The Portland Housing Bureau, of course, and Shannon are in the process of purchasing the Westwind Apartments in Old Town for reconstruction with the housing bond. The project is expected to provide approximately 70 housing units paired with supportive services for individuals exiting homelessness. Multnomah County has stepped up in a big way, committing $4 million towards the project. For decades, the single-residency occupancy, sometimes known as SRO building, on Northwest 6th Avenue in Flanders, has been an essential asset for social service providers in the central city, seeking low-barrier housing for clients exiting the shelter system. The building currently houses many extremely low-income and vulnerable tenants. The low-cost, low-barrier housing that the Westwind offers is vital to our efforts to tackling homelessness in the central city. But, it's also, unfortunately, increasingly scarce to find these kinds of opportunities. Funding these kinds of housing solutions for our most vulnerable neighbors is extremely important to me, to my administration, and I know to everybody sitting around this table. I want to particularly thank Chair Kefory and Commissioner Stegman for their active participation in this effort. But, the reality is, it could not have happened without everybody sitting around this table, dipping their oars into the water and pulling hard. So, thank you to all of you. And, at this point, I'll, I'll turn this over to Chair Kefory.
Just real briefly, wanted to say that I, I think we heard earlier from Heather that while we have an ambitious goal, we've already begun our implementation. And, this project is just a key example of something that we, we never would have been able to act on this quickly and this effectively, even just a couple of years ago. It is this, this relationship, this partnership that we have built, the framework that we have built, that has allowed us to, to move quickly, you know? And, I want to thank Commissioner Stegman, who led the funding efforts here, and Heather speak a little bit about, about that.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mayor. So, this past month, I had the opportunity to tour the 19 shelters that we support through partnerships with several of our amazing partners and nonprofits. I was so impressed by the various shelter models and the importance of serving people with a wide range of circumstances and needs. One size does not fit all. But, there are some basic needs that are universal, and housing is one of them. By providing permanent supportive housing, we can offer the tools needed to find a pathway out of poverty and build greater stability, which is why Chair Kefory and I were so pleased to introduce a resolution to fund long-term supportive housing with the proceeds from the sale of Wapato, and we are now ready to reinvest those proceeds. As part of the resolution, I've had the privilege of convening the Housing Strategy Work Group to prioritize the highest and best use of our limited resources. Collaborating with my fellow commissioners and their staff, department leadership, and Mark Jolyn with the Joint Office, has provided great insight and a shared commitment around our collective goals. So, sincere thank you to all of the work group members. Our goal was to identify one or two top priorities where funding would have a significant impact and could leverage other resources. And, today, it gives me great pleasure to report that we have found a project that aligns with our number-one priority, permanent supportive housing at the Westwind Apartments. This project will not only preserve and improve 40 units of naturally occurring affordable housing, but it will create 30 additional units. I can't think of a better project that reflects the work group's priorities and that leverages our scarce resources.
And now, I'll hand it back to Mark and Shannon. Thank you, Commissioner Stegman. We truly are grateful for the ability to buy this parcel of land and preserve and replace this housing with long-term quality affordable housing. I appreciate the partnership with the Joint Office and working with us to help identify a parcel that met, and a project that met your needs. And, I'd like, still like to thank our bond partner, specifically Michael and Home Forward, who are looking with us at the rehab needs and keeping folks safe in the building while they're there before we're able to replace it, as well as helping us with the replacement and asset management. So, truly, everybody at this table has been involved in this project, and we're, and we're very grateful for that. Thank you.
So, we have time for questions. I appreciate that everybody was patient with the presentation. We had a lot of information to get through, but we did it. And, so now, we do have some time to talk about the report, talk about what you heard in the Joint Office presentation. The floor is open.
So, I have a question. So, thank you so much for this presentation. I think this is exciting, the work that we are committed to be doing to serving our community and really making sure that we're taking the big steps that are necessary to address this problem. And, I think the fact that we're doing it in cooperation with the city and county is a, is a big reason that we're successful. But, I don't think that our partnership should start, should stop there. And, on, one of the slides, you talked about the Bud Clark Commons and the 45% decline in Medicare costs that they had. And, so, I'm very interested in hearing more about how we can parlay those Medicaid savings and some of the savings in our health system to help fund some more of this work. So, if you could give a little more detail about that.
I share that interest. We'd love to have some of those savings.
That's an excellent question. And, I think that, you know, that's, there's a lot more detail to that study available online. We are actually, through the FUSE effort, also looking at Medicaid data in addition to, as part of the health system's work. So, our goal is in identifying the savings in the Medicaid data, then approaching folks like Healthshare and Care Oregon and saying, "Look, you're, you're finding a great deal of savings when these folks that are so expensive and inappropriately inexpensive," I should say, "by receiving housing and services. Wouldn't you be interested in investing more in these housing and services?" And, so, I think that what we need to do is have, there's some compelling data, and we have presented that, but I think we need broader systems-wide data for them to really come to the table. That doesn't mean they haven't already come to the table. I think Care Oregon has provided some resources to the Joint Office in order to fund an outreach worker to support the, the joint team. Is that right?
The mobile PSH.
The mobile PSH team. And, that outreach worker, I think, i- is really focused on their members. So, that's the other thing that's going to be a challenge, is if you ask Medicaid for funding to fund housing and services, they're going to want their members prioritized for that housing and services. And, so, if you do that, then they go to a top of the list that they may not necessarily go to the top of if they aren't assessed the same way that other vulnerable populations. So, there, there's some tension around that, too.
Thank you.
Yeah. I have a question.
Heather, maybe along the same lines, I'm familiar with the food prescription program. And, I'm just wondering, is there a way, a lot of times, we know that people are medically fragile when they're discharged from the hospital and could be homeless. And, I'm just wondering, is there a way to prioritize those folks?
That's a great question. I think that's, that's more of an implementation question than I'm not sure. Can you repeat the few, the what prescription?
Well, around food.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Food prescriptions. Are you familiar with that?
I am, I am. Sorry, I misunderstood. I, I, I think the challenge, in, in all honesty and transparency, I think the challenge in all of this is that a lot of people can be prioritized for the supportive housing. And, I think that, I think that would be a great population to prioritize. But, do you prioritize them over the Medicaid savings people? Or, do you prioritize them over the people who are cycling, who are, have the greatest number of bookings in jail? Or, who do you prioritize them over the folks that are cycling through the emergency department? I mean, it's, it's, it's a challenge that we need to address, and I think that we intend to address as part of our FUSE efforts. So, that'll be, that'll be fun.
Well, and just, just a follow-up. In looking at page 28, I mean, if you look at just the sheer economics-
Yes.
-an inpatient stay in a state, well, that's a state hospital, it's 888. But, next to that is the emergency room at $500. So, I mean, I think, yeah, I, obviously, this is very hard to prioritize all of these populations that are in severe need. But, I think if we could get at, at the financing, too, to say, "Look, this, this is a cost savings, too."
Yes.
And, this might be a way for us to leverage our funds.
That's an excellent point. Yes.
I'd like to just call out something missing from the resource alignment slide. I realize this is not a comprehensive list, but it's something I'm really interested in. And, that's the vital role of faith communities. And, the fact that they really are critical but underutilized partners in ending homelessness. And, in Portland alone, I think we have at least a half a dozen different faith communities with surplus land who would like to, to develop affordable housing, quite possibly supportive housing, who face obstacles due to zoning codes. So, I just wanted to kind of put that out there for everyone to think about. Most churches have conditional-use zoning and cannot currently develop residential housing. And, I would hope that we really seriously look at that issue in the context of this conversation.
I, I agree. That is something that's missing, so I made a note of that. Thank you. I would, one of the things that sparks in my mind, just real quickly, is that in the work in Los Angeles, one of the things that they've done is that they've looked at their zoning and they've looked at their requirements around zoning to be able to reduce those in order to create more supportive housing. So, I think that's a community, a huge city we could look at in terms of finding out how they did that and what are ways that we could maybe replicate that. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I want, first of all, to thank everyone here who has put together this really, it's not exhaustive, but it's quite comprehensive report and given us so much information and confirmation, I think, of what we know, that supportive housing is really the, the best answer to what we need, both from a, the standpoint of individuals and humane approach and for the actual cost savings we can have. One question I have, I wanted to call out in the section on page, I think it's pages 29 to 30. I don't know whether it was the report, I don't know what version of the report I was reading when I noted those numbers, but talking about lessons learned from other communities, about the challenges that service providers can face, it's really a workforce question when scaling up these operations to meet the demands for services that the new units require. And, I think it's a really good time for us to consider how we're addressing this, but people who are doing this work are often, I mean, it's most underpaid, you know, don't, overworked, no benefits, working with the most challenging populations. And, it's a really, really difficult job in the best of times. Can you speak to maybe how other communities like Los Angeles have handled that particular workforce issue?
One of the things that they're doing very concrete, in fact, our office is very much involved in this, is working with local universities to make sure that the training comes at the university level in terms of working with this population specifically in their schools of social work. And, it's not just social work, it's social work in dealing with this very specific population. So, in terms of coming up from university level, there's that, that's happening. And, our, and I'm speaking from our office in Los Angeles, because that's what I know the most about and what's happening down there. But, I know there's investments from other entities to do this. They're doing a lot of training. They're doing a lot of training around supportive housing. We have a thing called Dimensions of Quality, where we provide training on various aspects of both operating supportive housing, providing services in supportive housing, and even developing supportive housing. So, and, we do a lot, we do property management workshops down there all the time. There's, there's, we, we offer a lot of training, we support other people's training in the community. And, I think there's a big push for, as you mentioned, a need for, let's see if these folks could have a living wage and not have to fight for affordable housing units along with everybody else. So, there's a recognition of that, and there's, they haven't solved it, but there's a recognition that there's a need to address all of that, too.
If I could just piggyback onto that, I think maybe that's something we, the city and the county could put on our legislative agenda priorities. The League of Cities has prioritized mental health funding, but I think they tend to think about what's that buying, rather than how are we keeping people with master degrees, well-prepared, well-trained, getting $15 now or less to stay in the profession. So, that's certainly something I think we should consider for a legislative priority.
Very good. So, last comment here from Chloe, and then we'll wrap it up.
Sorry, I would be remiss in my duties as a tenant protections and renter rights, renters' rights advocate if I did not highlight the statistic quoted on slide six, which is there is a 96% statistical correlation between the region's rent increases and the increase in homelessness. I want to point out that that 35,000 number on the, on slide eight of individuals serving our community represents about 5.5% of our population. But, we know around, that's probably less than half of the people who are severely cost-burdened and are on the verge of, or just not receiving these kinds of supports and services. And, we also know that about a quarter of our residents are cost-burdened by renters, or 25% of renters, sorry, I don't want to mislead anyone. No, it's residents, sorry. Okay. 50% of Portlanders are renters, half of them are cost-burdened. So, yeah, 25%. So, that is just to say, I really don't think we can underestimate the importance of tenant protections if we want to keep people out of this growing pool of people that need these supports. I didn't get a lot of sleep last night, I apologize.
You want to tell us all why?
I know you're dying to know, Mayor. My child woke up at 4:30.
I already know. You told me earlier. It was football, right?
No. It was football.
All right. So, we'll all speculate on that. I know the answer, if you want to get it from me later. All right. So, thank you, thank you, everyone. Thank you, in particular, to Chair Kefory, to Commissioner Fish, to Mark Jolyn, Shannon Callahan, Patricia Rojas, Michael Blanecourt, and Heather Lyons for your present-
Callahan, Patricia Rojas, Michael Blonnikor, and Heather Lyons for your presentations today. They were all succinct, they were all fantastic. We all acknowledge that we have a lot of work ahead of us, but I'm personally very energized by the Joint Office outcomes. Even as more and more people are being pushed into homelessness, we've seen a remarkable increase in placements over the last several years, nearly doubling the number of placements into permanent housing since A Home for Everyone began. And I think that's something we can all be collectively proud of. I'm confident that we can continue to address this humanitarian crisis by continuing to place people into housing, offer prevention services, and create more shelter. Yes, we do have a humanitarian crisis playing out on our streets, we know that. But this is also, we know, not a one-time crisis. It's a moving target. It's an ongoing crisis, which is why our response needs to be sustained over time. And the objectives that we have established collectively require a sustained process over time. Supporting housing, supportive housing is a strategic investment in infrastructure. Addressing the homeless crisis, I'm sure we all understand, it's urgent and it is ongoing. We're building an institution and we're building it together. Collaboration between the City of Portland and Multnomah County is essential to create supportive housing. Neither institution can do it independent of the other. I'm confident that we have the right infrastructure to address a fast-growing population with extreme needs, and frankly, I'm confident that we have the right leadership sitting around this table to begin this process and lay the foundation for that important work for many years to come. Supportive housing is a proven solution to end chronic homelessness, and I'm very happy that we have all come together, working together under unified goals to uphold this commitment. So with that, I will give Chair Kofori the last words for today. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone around this table and all the staff who worked on this presentation today. This weekend, at my daughter's urging, I scrouched in the basement and found my high school cheerleading uniform. While, I'll be honest, it doesn't quite fit anymore, I still have retained that can-do attitude. And while I won't lead us in this cheer, I do want us to remember it. We know what works, we know how much it costs, and we can do it. Let's go.
Ra-ra. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.